I'll now call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order at 7:02 PM. We'll take a moment to do the pledge of allegiance preceded by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll have our coordinator call the roll.
Ms. Jackson?
Present.
Mr. Rollins?
Here.
Mr. Scravano?
Here.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Here.
Dr. Harner?
Here.
Mr. Connor?
Here.
Mrs. Powers? With six present, one absent, we have a quorum.
Thank you, and I'd like to thank the media students from Auburn High School who are here working tonight to operate the broadcast equipment. I'm sorry I don't have a list of your names, but I know you're here, so thank you for being here. And before we go on to recognition, I'd like to, if there are no objections, in order to accommodate our guests from the strategic planning team, we'll reorder the agenda to consider the first action item for tonight, which is a 2015-2020 strategic plan. Is there a motion and a second to approve the strategic plan? So moved. Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Dr. Harner. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Connor?
First of all, thank you very much to everybody for all your input. It was a great effort, and I think the only thing I'd like to say is that, as I understand it, we're going to have work groups that come out of this, and I think there's many things about the implementation of the language and our intentions that I'm sure will follow up on after this, but again, thank you to everyone who contributed, and it's a great effort.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Ms. Jackson?
So are you moving this on the agenda to accommodate recognitions, or is this a discussion item? So it's just recognitions at this time?
No, both. Yeah. Do you have questions or comments?
Yes, I think the administration should briefly speak to it again.
Mr. Weisman? While he's pulling it up, our students from Auburn are Sophia Dunn and Antonio Villa, right? Thank you for being here.
Right, so as I reflect on the process that we went through, it seems to me that there are really probably five things that make up a school system. First, we have to have some type of fiscal and operational structure. We need staff that can do the work. That staff creates a learning environment for students. After we do that, we then start to involve the community. If we're going to build a school district, this is, I think, the order that you would do it in. You would bring in the community then, after you have some of that basic structure and environment in, and then you'd be able to teach students. And so I just reflected on this a little bit, and what we have aligns with it, I think. I even tried to be really pretty and make the colors coordinate. So really, if we go from the right and move to the left, we have fiscal and operational stewardship as a fifth goal, quality staff as a fourth goal, optimal climate as a third goal, engaging partnerships as a second goal, and growth and achievement for students as a first goal. Since October, we've had a team of about sixty individuals work on a monthly basis. They got together every month since August to give days of their lives. Some of them took vacation days from work. Many of them are staff, and so were able to use that time here, gave many days up to put together this plan. We started out with a kind of an overview of what we were going to do. We had a data retreat, and we had a visioning retreat. They spent one day every month since October putting this plan slowly together. In between those days, we went out and got feedback from the community, from staff members, from students. All in all, we have a little over two thousand pieces of input that we've received from the community. The biggest one was a district assessment that we performed in September. It was a three-day visit that career educators from outside of our school district came in. They spent a day, a full day interviewing individuals in the office, in the central office, and then they spent two full days in schools. We visited twenty schools over two days. They interviewed parents, staff, and students at all twenty of those schools. I'm not sure we've ever done anything like that before. It was a great data point for the district. And from that data retreat, we decided on where we wanted to be and things that we needed to focus on. And so you have the goals in front of you. There are five goals to the strategic plan. Under those five goals, there are nine strategies that the strategic plan team proposes that the district focus on for the next five years in order to get where we want to get. They revamped our mission statement to be collaboratively engaged, all students in a world-class education. The motto that they're proposing is a short form of that. It is shaping tomorrow today. The great thing about the motto is that it was thought up by students, and the students on that team owned that, and you're going to see a few of those students here as they're, hopefully, will be recognized here in a few minutes. The vision from this team that they proposed to the school board is to be the first choice for all families. And then they also identified ten values that we should use to guide all of the decisions and the behaviors in the district at all levels, at all levels of the organization. So this would include the board, would include all teachers, all support staff, all operational facility staff. These are the values that we think, as a strategic plan team, the district should abide by in trying to accomplish and reach towards the five goals by using those nine strategies. Moving forward, after adoption by the school board, the administration and staff will work to come up with a set of proposed indicators. The strategic plan team put together possible indicators as a starting point for the administration to work from, and we will, based on the feedback that we got at the last board retreat, we're really going to look at a few different levels of those. We will have power indicators that are real strategic in level, excuse me, can be used by the board and the superintendent to see progress over time of the school district. The essential few indicators, we're going to call them essential few indicators, that can be used for decision-making at the cabinet level and management, and then key indicators, which are more technical in nature. So we're going to take the next couple of months and make sure that we have a real robust set of indicators that we can use to measure our work. We really believe that in order for the strategic plan to be enacted and to be a plan that we're living, that we need not only those power indicators at the top, but people on a day-to-day basis need to understand what they're doing and how the work that they're doing influences and is part of the strategic plan. So we really need technical-level indicators. Our timeline moving forward is this month, we have already started discussing indicators. We're going to do some training on indicators and action plans, and the communications department is helping me put together communication materials for, first, the staff and then the general public to receive, to be brought up, brought forward in their knowledge about the strategic plan. Through April, we will be working on those indicators and action plans and hope to be able to discuss our progress with you on that at the next board retreat. We'll be working on actually delivering communications to schools and departments. In April, we'll, again, hopefully have a finalized proposal for those indicators. And then in May and June, after we have those indicators and the ways that we're going to measure ourselves, we need to do some heavy work, quick work in May and June to make sure that our monitoring system is aligned, and then we'll work on a second round of communication to staff. We feel like it's really important for staff initially to understand that the plan is there and that there is a new plan that is coming as the old plan sunsets, but then, after we do that initial round where they understand that the plan exists, we feel like it's going to be really important to make sure that they understand how they fit into the plan and what piece of the puzzle they fit into for the plan to be livable. That is just a quick overview of where we're at, and I'd be happy to answer some questions. Really excited about tonight.
So are measures and indicators the same thing? Are you using those interchangeably, or are they different?
The indicators would be things that we want to look at, and an indicator may have multiple measures. So we may want to look at, one measure may be operational efficiencies, and we may have a handful of different measures, and some of this gets, it's really linguistics, but the way that we're looking at is measure, there may be multiple measures for an efficiency indicator. We may look at transportation efficiencies, operational efficiencies, fiscal efficiencies. So there could be multiple measures for a single indicator.
Then you guys will report back to the board on progress, is that what you're saying?
Definitely. So the board will receive regular updates, probably at the quarterly retreats, and that's something that I think we should talk about in April. Regular updates on the indicators, but also you'll receive regular updates on the action plans. So the action plans are how we live the plan, and what we do as an organization is more important than what's on a piece of paper, and so it's going to be really important that you expect the school district to report back to you their ability to execute on the action plans that come from the strategic plan. Action plans are going to be, teams are going to be put together that include different levels of staff, and we'll be working on creating those between now and April and May, and those will be readjusted and relooked at on an annual basis. There will always be items that we will be working on and things that we should be checking off the list as we make progress, and we will report back, my proposal will be on a quarterly basis, much like we did with the board priorities previously, where we would give regular reports on the board priorities and progress on the board priorities. I think that was a great practice and a great pattern that was instituted with what you would propose as priorities, and I think that practice is something that we can model moving forward.
And I might have missed this. You said it's going to be disseminated to families when, before the start of next school year? So it'll be mailed out, or when they do registration?
So right now, our initial communications plan, we're putting together this month, and it includes a primary focus on staff members, and then the second phase will be, right now, as we're looking at that and putting it together, will be the greater community. We're focusing, really, over the next couple of months, we're focusing on staff.
The draft plan is on our website.
Correct. The draft plan is on the website. The plan that you have in front of you is on the website, and on the website, it's also possible to see, under RPS 205 readiness 2020, you can see all the iterations of every draft, the work that the plan team did each month, their proposals, what they put forward, and what came from the facilitators. So all of that, all that work for the last six months is available on the website.
Thank you. Any other questions? Now I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of the 2015-2020 strategic plan.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scravano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
With five yeses, one no, one absent, the motion passes.
Mr. Dotson Jr., I'll turn this over to you for recognition.
Good evening, and thank you. Two Guilford High School students participated in the 2015 Illinois High School Theater Festival. Senior Bridget Pace and sophomore Cameron Strandon were on the all-state crew of the 2015 production of Pippin. They've been working one weekend each month since August to produce the performance, which was in January at the University of Illinois. Congratulations to these students and to their teacher, Melissa Wolf, at Guilford High School. Their principal, Janice Hawkins, is also here. Let's please give these students a warm round of applause. Members of the 2015 strategic plan team have met for months to create a plan to continue moving our district in a strategic direction. Special thanks to Board President Ken Scravano and Board Member Tim Rollins for representing the Board of Education and working with the fifty-five-member team, including teachers, community members, central office administrators, parents, students, bargaining unit leaders, principals, and non-certified staff. Tonight, we are thankful for each member of the strategic plan team for giving their time, talent, ideas, and input, but most of all, thanks for your dedication and desire to improve Rockford Public Schools on behalf of our children. Let us please recognize, if you're here and you're on the team, please stand. Let us please recognize these wonderful servants of our community. I also want to recognize John Slater, who was a teacher, who is also here in support of those students. John Slater, thank you for being here, sir. Thank you. I'll grab it. Unless you want to take, you want to take these now? Thank you, sir. That is all.
Amen. For as much time as the volunteers all gave, they probably should have come through the line twice, but we appreciate all of their time and talent. So we will now move on to the communications, petitions and communications portions of our meeting, when we invite the public to make comments. The First Amendment of the United States Constitution guarantees the rights of citizens to petition their government, as well as provides for freedom of speech. Also, the Illinois School Code requires that there be a time at regular and special meetings for public comment. Thus, we are following those mandates during this petitions and communications portions of our agenda. According to Board Policy 2.230, the public comments portion of the meeting is limited to thirty minutes. The board will not respond to comments at this time. If it is appropriate, you'll be contacted in a timely manner by staff in response to your questions. In order to allow sufficient time for the business of the board and to conduct our meetings in an efficient and effective manner, we are requesting that you comply with our guidelines that are posted, and each speaker will be allowed no more than two minutes to address the board. We have eight speakers tonight. I will remind you of our clock on the wall to help you with your two minutes. It's not appropriate to address individual board members or individual administrators or discuss matters that would otherwise be confidential in such open meetings. Two names will be called at one time, the one whose time it is to speak and the person who will speak next. When you are the second person, please come to the front as well and sit in the vacant chair. That way, we can devote the maximum amount of time to your public comments. So our first speaker tonight is Quincy Wright, to be followed by Prophet Yosef. Mr. Wright? Can you hit the button to turn the mic on there? Thank you.
Hello, I'm Quincy Wright. My question for the board is, what is really going on here? The superintendent is being built up as a person who is saving the school of Rockford, but that's not the case in the black community. Before 2011, when Mr. Rainey took over their school, their school was known as the community embarrassment. They couldn't even have lunch in the cafeteria. All of that has changed. Basically, I think that firing of Mr. Rainey was disrespectful personally to the Rockford Public Schools and to the black community, because since he has taken over, truancy is down, that test scores are at the highest since under his watch, which in turns means more money from the government for Rockford Public Schools. So if you're not fighting for the kids, who are you really fighting for? Is this personal, or what? And then I listened to, I just sit here and listen at the strategic planning, and he had on there that you needed the staff before the community. You have to know the community in order to staff anything. So that's my time, and I thank you for listening to me.
All right, let me say that again, because I didn't have my mic on. Prophet Yosef, to be followed by Melvin Brown.
Prophet Yosef, my name.
Yosef, I'm sorry.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Prophet Yosef. I'm a community activist. I did nineteen years, eleven months, twenty-nine days, one hour, ten minutes, fifteen seconds in the United States Navy. I did three tours of, I'm a retired school teacher. It says in the book of Proverbs, the twenty-ninth chapter, eighteen verse, where there is no vision, the people perish. What I want to speak about tonight are sixteen qualities of a visionary leader. One, they lead by example. Two, they live by the highest standards of honesty and integrity. Three, they share information openly and willingly. Four, they coach it to improve performance. Five, they insist on efficacy. Six, they hold employers accountable. Seven, they have courage. Eight, they show confidence. Nine, they are decisive. Ten, they have a strong sense of urgency. Ten, eleven, they make every minute count. Twelve, they earn the loyalty of employees. Thirteen, they are employees sent to. Fourteen, they listen to employees. Fifteen, they are determined. Sixteen, they are available and visible to his or her staff. These sixteen qualities of a visionary leader Principal Rainey have. I'll put Principal Rainey against any principal in the United States. He is a walking encyclopedia. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, sir. Melvin Brown, to be followed by Reverend Anthony Greer.
Thank you. Amen. I should have put on my thing Apostle Melvin Brown, but that's all right. Thank the board for this opportunity, to have this chance to speak to the Rockford District 205, and the statement I would like to make, since 1980, the Rockford School District 205 has proven to the black and the Spanish community that it's very racist in its hiring practices and its firing practices and educating our children. You do want the money that the state gives for the black and the Spanish children, but you do not want to educate them properly. So we accept the message that you have sent to the black and Spanish community. So we want to send you a message back that it's time to pull our children out of these schools, so you will stop collecting the money. The other thing we want to let you know, these pastors that you got pulled on the sideline that you say represent the black community do not represent the black community. So it's time for Pastor Malone, Pastor Copeland, Pastor Board to stand up and be the men of God they're calling for. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Brown. Reverend Anthony Greer? Reverend Anthony Greer, to be followed by Elsie Wilson.
Good evening. Again, I want to thank all of our people from the community coming out for support tonight. I'm talking in regards to the unfair behavior of the hiring practice and firing of this district. But I was looking online at our mission statement, and it stated that one of our missions is to prepare students for future. And the question I have is how, when our black students don't even see other black teachers teaching them? The other thing was organization values. It said we're going to build integrity, trust through honest communication. How is that when our leader does not talk to black groups or families in the community or get his hand dirty unless they're pushing shovels at a construction site that his family owns? The other one was create a service of culture of commitment and accountability to serve. How can we promote when we have an office visits by people that cost us over $50,000 for inappropriate behaviors, having sex on the job, but we're demoting people that bring achievement and brought test scores up and behaviors up in the schools? We demote people that are trying to be the best they can, and we keep our black staff in the basement, but you just had a Caucasian talk about coming from the basement at the old school board meeting. How can we have accountability when our own leader does not want to be held accountable for what this community needs? Also, it said support professional development and accountability. How when we are not... When we're replacing principals that we have fired with retired people on taxpayers' expense? When we have other capable African-American assistant principals that can come in and do the same job as the retiree that's coming in looking at the golf club book or looking at ESPN on his spare time that don't know nothing about the black kids? So, how can we say we're doing what's right for our children? How can we have a mission or how can we have any type of goals when our leader does not even know what it means to be black? So, now, my thing to you tonight is, is that you step up and be leaders that we have voted you to be, or just step out or quit the job. Better fact, fire them and get rid of the whole cabinet. God bless you.
Thank you. Elsie Wilson, to be followed by Royce Dixon, Sr.
Thank you for this opportunity. And I'll say again, like I said before, over 50% of real estate taxes in Winnebago County go to the Rockford School District. Children are our future. Children need positive role models. For the past two-plus years, I have tutored children at Lewis Limon in the third grade. As a plant superintendent that I was at one point, I always supported the managers that put people to work and do their assigned task and held these employers accountable for their task. Consistency is important when dealing with the bargaining unit. I've found that being consistent and fair stands out above inconsistency. I also found that the bargaining unit thrives on inconsistency and a lack of support for the manager. If support is not given to the person in charge, the bargaining unit persons get to do less. And they have a say about being negative and positive. Usually, the employees that spoke the loudest were the ones that did not do their job effective or efficient. And the manager told these individuals to go to work with my blessings. I feel that the principal that was released from his job was just a good... Was not a good choice. Positive results were coming from the school that he was in charge of, which with his being let go sends to me the wrong message to other people that aspire to take the helm of a school. Respect is something that is earned, and you have to work to get it and maintain it. And I feel that this gentleman was on the right track in reference to respect.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. I'm sorry your time is up. Royce Dixon, Sr., to be followed by Allison Wang. I'm sorry, can I have you turn the mic on again? It got shut off. Thank you.
Okay. As parents and educators, it is our job to make sure that we do the best for our children and prepare them for the next level of their lives. This is what we are supposed to do. However, what this administration is doing is not giving our best to our kids, but giving them to the adults, such as Dan Appino. You gave him everything he wanted and more to take the job at all and to turn the program around. But what you didn't realize was the progress was already in place with the junior tackle teams, such as DePage's Gateway, Booker, Northwest. These kids were already in process of becoming better because they were taught the basics and staying together. You gave Carl Amato the best when you gave him the head of basketball operations, and no other titles exist for football, baseball, track, soccer, or any other sport. You made Matt Parker the head athletic director, which, by the way, contradicts with Mr. Amato's job with being the head of basketball operations. Why is there a need for head of basketball operations when you have a head athletic director? My point is you gave them the best, and our kids go lacking. You gave the kids at East High School Roy Sackmaster, who had never been a coach at a varsity level before, yet there were two other coaches with 10 years or more experience, in Chris Dixon and Joe Danforth. Because of what's going on now with the buddy system, you get guys like Roy Sackmaster and Dean Martinetti, who have been hired. Martinetti, this is his third go-around, and yet we have available coaches that are here and ready to do the job. And again, with our coach, Roy Sackmaster, he's had an affair with another coach. That wasn't... He wasn't being held accountable for that, but yet he wants to hold our kids accountable.
I'm sorry. You can't... You're not following the guidelines of speaking about individuals.
I'll move on. As a coach, your job is not just to coach, but be a mentor, a role model, a father figure, whatever. A kid is having a...
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Allison Wang, to be followed by Henry, and I don't have a last name on here. I'm sorry.
Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The Governmental Ethics Act requires elected officials and certain employees to file something called a statement of economic interest in order to prevent any conflicts in interest. And RPS 205 requires several people to file such statement of economic interest, such as building principals, head of any department, any employee responsible for negotiating contracts in amount of $1,000 or greater, and any employee in the position that requires an administrative or chief school business official endorsement. And additionally, the state also requires for people who have direct supervisory authority or responsibility for the formulation, negotiation, or execution of contracts in amount of $1,000 or greater, and they have to file a statement of economic interest. And so then, the other day, when I checked the county records, I found that several of the Facility Plan Committee members did not file any such statements for the past three years. And this committee is in charge of helping determine where several hundred millions of dollars will go. And so, you just imagine that they file such statements. However, I just don't know if the Board specifically gave them a waiver or there's some little loophole in the rules. But then, when it appears to be not transparent, taxpayers may get to become nervous. And so, I'd like to urge the Board to be as transparent as possible. Thank you.
That's fine. I'm here to speak on behalf of the black community after utter disgust with the school Board and the failures that you have given to the black community in particular. How can you have a 78% black and Latino population and less than 5% black teachers? A 68% graduation rate? 28% of the students who do make it out are college already? 38% of the eighth graders going into high school are only 38% of the students going into high school already? Less than 50% graduation rate for black males? There is a message that's clearly being sent to our community. So, you don't have a last name because I'm not here to beg. We're not here to ask. My question for you is what are you trying to force us to do? Are you trying to force us to take our children out of the school district? Because the message is being clear before the people cares acting after that you don't care about our children. So, I'm sounding the alarm for you since you are taking notes. Take this note and make it very clear that not only is the superintendent failing, those on the Board who cannot educate our children are failing. And we will not stand by and allow you to disrespect not only the children, but us as well. So, since you cannot educate our children, let the alarm be sounded. There will be no more of this firing our black males with no replacement for them that's qualified when we have qualified people. If you don't want us, we don't want you. So, let it be known then that this is the day it's coming to. There is no more go-along to get-along. The scared Negro days are over. So, let it be known that this is the sound of the black community, and if you cannot get with it, then that's it. We'll go, and we'll do our own thing. We don't need you. The same books and education you teach, we can teach as well. So, let the alarm be sounded and let it be known. If you force our hand, then this is what it's come to, and this is what it's come to. Let it be known. Thank you for listening.
We thank you all for your interest and your cooperation with our guidelines. Are there any Board member comments at this time? Mr. Connor?
Yep. Want to congratulate Auburn. They won the January 28th NIC-10 Quiz Bowl, so congratulations to all the students.
Any other comments? Board member comments? If not, we'll move on to our consent portion of our agenda, including the following consent items: the meeting minutes of January 27th and January 24th, 2015; payroll, accounts payable; purchase orders; contracts under $10,000; and travel. And the following bid recommendations: IFB 15-20, which is the Auburn and Guilford High School Boiler Replacement Project rebid; the IFB 15-23, which is the East High School Paving Improvements; the IFB 15-25 West Middle School Asbestos Abatement Project; and D, the IFB 15-26 East and Jefferson Auditorium Sound Projects; the recurring contracts of SAS Star Autism Support, Inc.; the Legacy Charter and the Galapagos Charter School Amendments to their contracts; and the other consent items, including the resolution for the extension of credit and incumbency certificate and the Freedom of Information Log. Is there a motion and a second to approve the consent items?
Still moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rollins, I think. Or... Yeah. Are there any consent items that Board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Ms. Jackson?
I put eight.
Eight? Eight and nine? Okay, all of them? Okay. Any others? Now, I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of the consent items not pulled.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scravano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Herner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson? The motion passes with six yeses and one absent.
Would you like eight to be separate or combined? Okay, all right. So, I'll take a motion then to approve the items under eight, which are the bid recommendations.
Still moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rollins. Questions or discussion? Mr. Rollins?
Got a question. I just want to comment on the four contracts. I noticed that three of them came in under our pre-bid estimates, which is good. One of them's only slightly over, so that's all good news.
Okay, great. Okay, I'll then have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of items eight, A, B, C, and D, which are the bid recommendations.
Mr. Scravano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Herner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
The motion passes with five yeses, one no, and one absent.
I'm going to request that we do 9A separately, so I'll take a motion and a second to approve 9A, which is the Star Autism Support Program.
Still moved.
Second.
Mr. Connor, second by Mr. Rollins. Any questions or discussion? Ms. Jackson?
Yes, some...
Ms. Cyrus?
Speak to it, please. Thanks. I wasn't able to get on my board doc, so I couldn't see anything. So, if you could speak to it.
So, this contract has been before you before. This has to do with training our autism teachers in all of the techniques that are to advance their skills in the communication section, in creating structures in the classroom so that children with autism are able to learn in the best way that's possible. At the end of the... Right now, it's a pilot program from our early childhood classrooms through eighth grade. We have some of our classrooms aren't involved. At the end of the training this year, our autism team will be trainers of trainers that can take this program and teach it to the rest of the district.
The cost?
I don't have the... I think it... Do you guys have the contract in front of you? I want to say it's $10,000 additional.
$4,500.
Okay. I had previously already brought forward a contract that was over $10,000, so that's why I brought it again because it's at $14,000 when you add the two together.
Any other questions? Now, I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of 9A, the autism support.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Herner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scravano?
Abstain.
The motion passes with four yeses, one no, one abstain, and one absent.
And I'll take a motion and a second to approve items nine, B, and C, the Legacy and Galapagos Charter School Amendments.
Still moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Dr. Herner. Questions or discussion? Ms. Jackson?
So, what are... Why are there amendments?
Ms. Holdley.
These are amendments that were requested by the Illinois State Board of Education. There's actually minor adjustments in paragraphs one and three of the Second Amendment to the charter school. It changes the fiscal year from August 15th of each year to July 1 of each year. And then, in the second paragraph, it changes the ability to start school as early as 8/1 of each year to 8/15.
And are they always considered recurring contracts because they're the charter? Is that why?
Because you've already approved the charter, and these are just addendums or amendments to them.
Any other questions or comments? Now, I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of items nine, B, and C, which are the Legacy and Galapagos Charter School Amendments to their contract.
Dr. Herner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scravano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses and one absent.
Thank you. We are now at the closed session consent agenda items, including the HR organizational report and professional development report, the closed session consent student discipline items, in which case student discipline... Students expelled or suspended students are prohibited from being on school grounds and school-sponsored activities without the prior written permission of the principal. The following student CCC-7 is expelled for the remainder of this school year and the first semester of next year. Expulsion for the following students SEB-8 and SDR-11 are held in abeyance contingent upon a conditional probationary agreement for the remainder of 2014-15 school year and the first trimester of next year, being executed on before the next board meeting. The following students KND-9 and CAG-10 are expelled for the remainder of this school year 2014-15 and the entire 2015-16 school year. The expulsion of MAW-12 is held in abeyance contingent upon a conditional probationary agreement for the second trimester of the 2014-15 school year, being executed on or before the next board meeting. And GRJ-13 is expelled for the remainder of the school year with a conditional probationary agreement for the remainder of next year. And the following students have been granted a conditional probationary agreement, JDB-1, JSB-2, TB-3, BEM-4, KDR-5, and TMW-6. Is there a motion and a second to approve the closed session consent items?
Still moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Dr. Connor. Are there any items that members would like to have pulled for separate consideration? Ms. Jackson?
11, 12, 13.
Okay. That would be all of them.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
How about 10A and B? Were they included with this, or they are separate, I assume?
Did we approve items 10A and B?
I don't believe so.
I thought that was under the items not pulled.
Oh, they were under items not pulled.
Right. They were the items not pulled. That's correct. All right, yeah. Okay, I will take a motion then to approve... Okay, I will take a motion then to approve the HR organizational report and PD professional development report, which is item 11.
Still moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Dr. Herner. There is no discussion, so I'll have the coordinator call the role on the approval of the HR organizational report and professional development report.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Herner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
The motion passes with five yeses, one no, and one absent.
12 and 13 together, Ms. Jackson? Okay, I'll take a motion and a second then for the approval of the student discipline items listed under 12 and 13.
Still moved.
Moved by Ms. McCulloch, second by Mr. Connor. No discussion, I'll have the coordinator call the role on the approval of the student discipline cases listed under item number 12 and 13.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Herner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson? The motion passes with five yeses, one abstain, and one absent.
Thank you all. We will move to our next agenda item, which is our superintendent's report, Dr. Chair.
Keep my remarks brief. There are three things that I wanted to address this evening. One is, I wanted to personally thank all of the thousands of community members that weighed in, one way or the other, on our strategic plan process, and the 55 people who regularly participated in the meetings. It was a wonderful process, and I think it's really going to set an important direction for our district over the next five years. Looking forward to getting into action planning and also working with the board to set indicators. Two, I wanted to acknowledge a meeting I was at this morning with Kids Hope, an entity that helps organize support in schools, particularly church support. It was really powerful to see that we already have three schools that have been adopted by local churches, and they provide support in a non... not in a religious way, but in a way where they organize around to provide extra resources for students. And it's really nice to see that, I think, we'll have some additional adoptions that'll be occurring this year. And finally, I had the honor to be part of NIU's P-20 Council, where we're looking at how, as a region, we can better align resources from birth to through college graduation and in between for students that want to pursue any other future that is oriented. It's a very complex system when you look at our region, and it's really nice to be at the table with groups like NIU, Rock Valley, but also with Community College, K-12, and early childhood systems throughout the state. So I think our region is heading in a good way with that meeting, and we had a great conversation today. Look forward to hearing what we accomplish coming up in the next six months with that group as well. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to committee reports. Ms. McCulloch, the education committee report.
Education committee met in this room on Monday, February 2nd. That was last week. We had, I think, five updates. There was one from Dr. Hickman on the SMART School Improvement Planning Process. And what we were given an update on was the whole measurement system, the SMART Measurement System, which measures the implementation and the impact of the SMART Goals process that we heard about last year. It includes... the assessment includes the student performance results, how well this... the school is strategically focusing on a common goal and on the improvement process. And thirdly, the cultural changes needed to sustain that improvement. There is a SMART Steering Committee that monitors and the progress using those SMART Measurement Systems, the SMS. The district is committed to full implementation of this in the year 2016-17. This year, 2014-15, is a learning year for two-thirds of our school. So there's a lot of work being done this year getting that in place. Each school already... each school will have a SMART Goal Implementation Process in place, and will continue to assess the progress on their goal once those are in place and improve as they move forward. And that is the goal for 2016-17. Dave Carson gave an update on the college and career academies. He spoke to some of the master schedule challenges. Our... one of the challenges is getting enough... getting classes at all the grade levels into their academy courses. We're meeting that with the freshman-level students, but not... which is... the goal is 80%. We're not meeting that yet with the students who are sophomores through seniors. He talked about the support that we've had within the community over the past year, referenced the ACT Prep Program, which is ongoing... which is going on right now. When it was begun in 2013, there were 128 students who stepped up. And this year, we had 475 students who are participating in the program, trying to improve their ACT scores. And it's supported by Midwest Group, and the students have incentives. But the biggest incentive that some of the students is... some of the students are sharing is just their hope to improve their ACT scores. We have STEM support. Our robotics teams have increased from three two years ago to 13 robotics teams this year in the district. The Academy Expo, we're up to 140 booths. We had 113 companies, and 2,800 freshmen came through the Academy Expo, and that included Belvedere students. They've added sophomore site visits, so that's another way that the community is participating in the academies by providing opportunities for our sophomores to come in and shadow for a day on different careers. The third report was from Tyler Fagan, and it was on our Drivers' Education Program. I don't know if you remember, but in the year 2013 school year, we changed our model of delivery for our Drivers' Education Service because we weren't meeting the needs of our students. We weren't able to move enough students through the program. And so the goal when we changed that was to serve more students, to improve our efficiency, and not just in getting students through the program, but also the cost effectiveness, and also to stay in compliance with the state law. A criteria, by the way, for a student to be able to be in the Drivers' Education Program is that they're passing eight classes over the past two semesters that they've been in the school, and that they turn 15 years old within the timeframe they're in Drivers' Education. And we always try to do the oldest students first. In fiscal year 20, we served 176 students. And fiscal year 15... 14-15, 1,125 students. And the cost per student in 2012 was $799. The cost per student this last year was $306. So they're meeting their goal of efficiency and increasing the number of students. In fact, they're meeting all three of their goals. The fourth report was from Colleen Cyrus, and it was an update in our special education. Our population of special education students has increased slightly over the past year. We've gone from 14.1% of our students to 15.1%. Regionally, that number has been flat. The state, it went up from 13.8% to 14.1%, so at 15.1%, we are higher than the state average. The expenditures... the staff expenditures in 2014 was 80... The expenditure for the entire special ed program, excuse me, in 2014 was $84.4 million. And of that, $72.5 million was in salaries and benefits for the staff. That is up $5 million from 2013. And that was because we did not get the same amount of reimbursement from the state that we had in the previous year. There was a report on the students who have... for whom we pay instructional tuition. Those are students we send out to day schools or residential schools. And between 2013 and 2014, the cost was flat at $7.2 million, but the state reimbursement on that was down from $5.4 million to $4.9 million. So therefore, the district's pay on that went up $5 million. So the state has a performance plan in place that they want to see for our special ed students that consists of two items. First of all is to have the least restrictive environment. Part A of that is the number of students who are in general ed classes 80% of the day. The state target currently is 53%, and Rockford is at 57.8% of our students who are in the regular ed classes at least 80% or more of the day. That is decreased from 2011. The other plan that they have is to increase the number of students... or decrease the number of students who are in self-contained programs, we call those. And those are students who are in the special ed program 40%... or in general ed, 40% or more of the day. So in other words, they spend more time in a classroom with special ed students. And our goal, obviously, and the state goal, is that we would reduce that number. The state target in... and we're behind a year just because of reporting. The state target that we have for 2012 was 18.5%, and Rockford is at 20.0%. So we still have great gaps in academic achievements. And so the goals, the recommendations moving forward are to increase the academic performance, to strengthen the linkages between the curriculum and special education, to continue to focus on financial efficiency and maintaining academic integrity, and to increase the administrative capacity and support and retain new administration for this special ed program. Our last report was from Matt Vosberg and Dawn Grant from the REA. Gave us a joint presentation on an item called PAR, which is Peer Assistance Review. This is something that's being done nationally. It creates a Common Language Process and System for Supporting and Evaluating Struggling Teachers. And teachers are evaluated... it's a collaborative effort between the REA and the district. The program is governed by a panel, which has eight members. Four are from the REA, and four are from the administration. The program itself hires two PAR consultant teachers. So there's two teachers who are hired, and I think we're still in the process of hiring for the 2015-16 school year. I think we had... they said 25 applications. Each of those teachers would have a caseload of 15 teachers, who are referred by the building principal to provide assistance, to help them move forward and mentor them. The... there is an opportunity for tenured teachers to also receive support, but this is focusing on our teachers who don't have tenure yet. It was an interesting statistic that we were given. 50% of new teachers quit within the first five years. So 50% of the people who go through all the training to become a teacher and get into the workplace realize that that might not be the job for them. The cost for this program is $215,000. 182 of that is in the teachers' salaries and stipends. And the rest is for some professional development program to design, the facilitation, and the costs of having the panel that we spoke of with the teachers and the administrators. Education committee will not meet in March. We just determined that. We have a pretty full agenda for April, and we're just... we will do that. That will be April 6th in this room at 5:30. One of the things that will be on that will be a review of the Code of Conduct that is underway right now with the meetings with the parents. And then it will be brought to another panel to review the recommendations that have been made. And we'll have a sound conversation and discussion about that at that meeting. We have some other updates as well, and those will be on our... the district website with the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you, that ends my report.
Mr. Rollins, the operations committee...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Connor, you have a question?
Yes, I do. I apologize, I can't go to the ed committee meetings anymore. Is Mrs. Cyrus still here?
No, I saw her leave.
No. So I don't need an answer tonight, but I'd like more information about what our policy is for special ed self-contained. Like to understand a little bit more about the details behind it, our policy, and what changes we would expect in that area for this coming year. So I'd like a little follow-up information on that. And in particular, I'd like to know the definition a little better of... maybe a description of the kinds of students that qualify for self-contained. If I heard you correctly, do I understand that it is our goal to have students that are in self-contained today more in, for lack of a better term, general ed courses? Did I understand that correctly?
The state indicator 5B talks about the percentage of students in general education, 40% or more of the school day. And the state, the targets... this started in '05 with a target of 20.9% and has gradually reduced each year. The target for this last year was 18%. So we want to see self-contained students who spend... a greater number of self-contained students who are able to move out into a general ed classroom for at least half of their day, or 40% of their day.
So my question stands. I'd like to know more about the kinds of students that qualify for that and the impact.
We'll have Ms. Cyrus follow up with you then.
Thank you.
Mr. Rollins?
The operations committee did not meet. We will meet here on the first Tuesday of the month, on March 3rd, 5:30 p.m.
Dr. Herner, the Facilities Plan Oversight Committee report.
Has not met, but will be meeting a week from today, February 17th, at 7:00 p.m. on the fourth floor.
Okay. Very good. We'll move on now to the action items for tonight's meeting. The first action item is the IEP-A grant acceptance that Dr. Wolf presented. Is there a motion and a second for that grant acceptance?
Still moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor? Second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Herner. Are there any questions or discussion? Now I'll have the coordinator call the role on the approval of the $75,000 IEP-A grant acceptance.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Herner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson? Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses and one absent.
Our next action item is the Architectural Services Agreement with Larson and Darby that Mr. Schmidt and Mr. Bailing presented. Is there a motion and a second?
Still moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rollins. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Connor?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, what is the total amount on this one? I want to make sure I've got the right number. I know it says a "not to exceed." Is that the way we're stating this? Because I went to the contract and tried to...
Mr. Bailing?
Add up the numbers.
It says up to $135,000.
Right.
Yeah, correct. There are three scopes of work totaling $135,600.
Okay, so it's not to exceed for the $135,000? Okay. That's all I wanted to make sure of.
Any other questions or comments? Now I'll have our coordinator call the role on the approval of the Architectural Services Agreement with Larson Darby.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Herner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson? Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
The motion passes with five yeses, one no, and one absent.
Our next action item is the resolution to approve a fence line easement to the Rockford Park District that was presented by Mr. Schmidt.
Still moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rollins. Any questions or discussion? Saying none, I'll have the coordinator call the role on the approval of the resolution to approve a fence line easement to the Rockford Park District.
Dr. Herner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses and one absent.
Thank you. We'll now move on to new business. And Mrs. Talbert Scott is going to make a presentation on a resolution approving the Intergovernmental Agency Agreement for Purchasing Houston-Galveston Area Council. Is that correct? There she is. There she is.
Good evening. What you have before you is a resolution for administration to move forward and seek approval to obtain an intergovernmental agreement with this Houston Galveston Area Council. What this basically is, is an, a purchasing consortium that we would formally like to have the board approve for us to become participants in. Our council, Thomas Bischoff, has reviewed this purchasing consortium's bidding rules and regulations to ensure that they do comply with what our state code requires us to do, and he has found that that does indeed do so. And so what we are asking the board to do is to, once again, just approve us to move forward to formally participate within this purchasing consortium.
Can you talk a little bit about cost and savings potential?
In terms of a cost, there is no cost to us to participate. In terms of savings potential, when we participate within any of the purchasing consortiums, of course, there's a much larger buying power because simply the sheer volume of the number of participants in any one purchasing consortium, as well as even within the purchasing department, the savings for us to not have to put it out for bid, which, you know, can cause the time for us as well as the advertising and those other type of cost. So what we found in general with purchasing consortiums is that the, the buying, just because of the sheer buying power, that it is favorable for us to move forward with these types of intergovernmental agreements with them.
Okay. Mr. Connor?
So a number of questions. First of all, what are the either products or services that we anticipate targeting through this consortium?
Sure. With this one in particular, we were looking at it to purchase some radios as part of a grant that our security services has actually, didn't like that, that it has actually obtained. But there is actually a number of various services and commodities that this purchasing consortium offers. Electronic computer-type items, certain types of software. And so what we would actually be looking to do with this, as well as other purchasing consortiums that we participate in, we actually look amongst the purchasing consortiums and see which ones actually offer us the better price. And so, like I said, they offer just a different variety, more commodity and equipment-type items.
So out of curiosity, since this is clearly out of state, where there are no equivalent organizations in the state of Illinois, is one part of the question, and I think the second part is, I know some of the things we've done have been to pool our purchasing with some other entities, in particular, school districts locally. So the first part is kind of curious about the out-of-state aspect, but the second is, what is our intention going forward on this? Would we try to get others, other entities locally, whether they're school districts or other government bodies, to be a part of this? What's our intention over the long haul?
In terms of anything more on a local, I want to say local, on a state-based level, I'll just put it that way. We did review some of the purchasing consortiums that are within the state, which mostly would be the central management services through the state of Illinois, and the particular equipment that we were looking for was not offered through them. There are other purchasing consortiums that we do participate in review that are more on a national nature, more so than this particular one. And so, as I mentioned before, we do actually look at more than one purchasing consortium to see if the equipment or items that, you know, the individual departments are looking for is being offered. And in this particular case, what we're looking for here, especially in the world of the security world, in which this particular equipment that we're looking for has, this purchasing consortium actually offered the type of equipment that we were looking for. And in terms of what I would like to call partnering with other local governments, or even other educational agencies, we do have some partnerships that we work with, like, for example, the Park District, for those things that we call more like the reoccurring contracts that we know we're going to bid out every three years, every five years, those types of things. And that we have some partnerships with them, as well as the county and the city of Rockford, that, you know, we'll send out and say, okay, this year we're going out for security services, and, you know, trying to see if there are any other partnership opportunities. The Park District is already a part of this particular purchasing consortium anyway, but I would be more than willing to share this information with the other local governments as well.
I guess one of the questions I have here is that, and we don't have to do it tonight, but one thing I'd like to know is, what is our criteria for having one or 100 different partnerships? Is it driven by the type of product, type of service, which I'm hearing that the main criteria here was we needed safety equipment, radios, et cetera, security? So I guess I'd like to have a, maybe just a sense of what kinds of criteria, you know, when would we look for new associations, and what might drive us to this? Because I hear you that there are some things that make sense locally, other things not, and it would be interesting to know our criteria, how we track it. And I think a sense, and I know this has already been asked, of the cost savings, or maybe there's some quality or service or other criteria again that you use, and I would be interested in what those would be.
Certainly, and one thing, just even as a side note, that of the, we use several purchasing consortiums. And so what we're actually having Attorney Bischoff do is just do a review to make sure that all of the purchasing proceed, why do I say purchasing policies and, and laws that these consortiums have, that they are actually in compliance with what we require as far as our district. Not saying that they are or are not, but just because there's just been so much change, we just want to make sure internally as administration that everything is in compliance, as well as even putting together some type of process or procedure, because as I mentioned, myself, as well as, I'm pretty sure Todd and any other operational area constantly have salespeople with purchasing consortiums contacting us. So really trying to get some guidelines in place of when we use it, when we don't, when we bid.
I think the, the one thing I'll just say out loud that I'm implying is, there's a certain level of complexity where there's a lot of diminishing returns, and all I'd like to do is understand the criteria and the kinds of things that would drive us, because I'm wondering if, at some point, if we're, if we, I mean, I, this is an exaggeration, but if we have 100 contracts, you know, is it more to our benefit, even though in certain cases, the pricing might be specifically better, that overall, the, the pricing and the amount of tracking time that your area has to do is simplified? So that's really the, kind of the essence of what I'm looking for.
Okay.
Ms. McCullough, did you have a question?
Yeah, he's kind of talking.
All right, Mr. Rollins?
I guess just listening, one concern that I think I have is, so participating in these consortiums is, my understanding is, is an exception to the competitive bidding requirement. So rather than having to go out to bid, you can, if you're participating in one of these consortiums, you can just buy off the schedules because they've already gone out and bid. But, but what I think I heard you say, and that's when my ears perked up, is that, so the, the central management services didn't have the particular equipment that you want. So my concern, I guess, and I, and really, you're going to have to be the gatekeeper here, is normally, you can't go out and ask for a specific brand name when you're competitive bidding, bidding, because you just have to go out and specify functionally what you want. And what I'm a little bit concerned, listening to this, is that if we have five schedules out there, and your users come to you and say, I want this particular item, you just find it on whatever schedule happens to have that particular item, and you go and buy it for them, which in fact could end up increasing our costs, i- if we allow that to happen. So I'm just sort of sounding a warning bell here, that if we do a bunch of these consortiums, and we use that to evade competitive bidding requirements, that we could end up actually spending more money than saving money, and you're the one who's going to have to make sure that doesn't hap, happen.
And in, in a response to that, actually, the purchasing department, we are very strong gatekeepers when it comes to anyone requesting a certain brand name. We've been trained very well by Attorney Holdley to ensure that that actually does not happen, but we actually do have, in a serious note, we actually do have controls in place where, like I said, there, there could be an instance where a person will say, well, so-and-so's salesperson talked to me, and I want that one. Okay? They're not the only ones that make that. What we need would be the specifications for that, and then we actually do the research. So our antennas are up, and we will ensure that we do have controls in place when using a purchasing consortium. When do we use it? When don't we use it? When is it advantageous for us to use it? Those types of things. And as I mentioned, because there are so many out there, a lot of the times, we can actually get competitive pricing even among the purchasing consortiums themselves.
Ms. McCullough, give it your lineup?
I'm just going to go with the other.
All right, okay. Dr. Hunter?
So how, how many do we participate in? And do they all require an intergovernmental agreement? Or are they other types of entities that we contract with?
Well, you want to go ahead, Lauren?
For the state of Illinois ones that are out on the state of Illinois websites, we don't require an intergovernmental agreement, or an agreement, or a resolution, a board resolution. If it isn't, and this is one of the issues that came up, we realized that there had been purchases through consortiums that we don't have agreements with, so that's what is being cleaned up currently with Attorney Bischoff, reviewing all of those. On another note, the consortiums themselves, at least the ones that I have looked at, do already bid out and seek competitive bids. So essentially, what they do is they gather the competitive bids, from which then governmental entities can purchase. And so there is already a competitive bid process that's built into the purchasing consortiums. That being said, it's still incumbent upon our purchasing department to ensure that those are in fact competitive prices, in making a determination as to whether or not to bid out or to go through the consortium.
And in terms of the number, I'm not sure exactly, but I want to say it's about eight consortiums that we are currently evaluating, ensuring that we have all the proper agreements and all those things in place.
Anybody else? All right. If you have more questions, I'm sure you'll be available to answer them for us.
I certainly am.
This will be presented at our February 24th board meeting for a vote. Are there any other new business items or agenda recommendations? Ms. Jackson?
Oh, just motion to adjourn.
All right, motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. We are adjourned at 8:18. Thank you.